Good evening and thank you for joining us for tonight's Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, October 26. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we move on to the report of superintendent, I just wanted to let everyone who's watching and here in the audience know that we are going to table the book discussion that we were planning to do tonight, which was discussing "The Power of Different" by Gail Salz. And there's the exhibit one. Because of the storm conditions outside, would really rather everyone get home safe and be in their homes and not have to travel in terrible weather. So we will move that to our next meeting, which is November 9, which also happens to be our open topics evening. So we'll make sure we get notice out for everyone to be aware of the timing and how that will all work. And now I will pass it on to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for this October 26 Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone's staying safe in the midst of tonight's nor'easter. I do hope that there are no power outages in the community. I do know we do have some water. We are taking on some water and our pumps are working here at the high school because there has been quite a few inches of rain over the last few hours of the day. If you haven't attended a board meeting recently, we are back to holding in-person meetings here in the middle school multipurpose room. But given that we must still be mindful of State Department of Health restrictions on the number of people allowed in school buildings, we are also continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube live. Additionally, all attendees and participants are required by order of the governor to wear face masks. I'd like to lead with a hearty congratulations to the cast and crew of Rye High School's Parsons Street Players, who put on three performances of the 39 steps this weekend. Congratulations, Mr. Repetto. A super fan who was there this weekend. I got to see the Saturday afternoon show and it was absolutely terrific. It was our first live theater performance since 2019 and everyone was thrilled to be there. The kids were terrific. The show was funny. It was well done and it was just, I enjoyed my afternoon being with them. Two more congratulations are in order for the Midland and Milton parents who threw two highly successful parent socials recently. Midland held theirs on October 14 and Milton's was this past Friday night. The funds raised by these socials are used to support parent organization-sponsored activities and gifts so they're vital to supporting our students' excellent school experiences. And thank you to both groups for the invitation. I enjoyed attending. Yesterday, the district restarted its highly successful surveillance testing program. Surveillance testing is useful in helping to identify asymptomatic individuals in our community with the ultimate goal of preventing the spread of COVID-19, keeping our community safe and our schools open. We thank everyone who's volunteered to be tested and it truly does take a village to keep us all safe and our schools open. And as I reported in my weekly communication update last Friday, I'm feeling optimistic that the district may be chosen to be the first school district in the state to pilot a test-to-state program wherein students, faculty, and staff who are exposed to a COVID-positive individual could be tested daily prior to entering one of our schools, preventing them from leading to quarantine and missed days of in-person schooling and teaching if they test negative and remain symptom-free. The program is already successfully in place in Massachusetts and Utah and CDC is looking at the practice as a possible nationwide program. It's an incredibly exciting possibility as we keep our students and teachers in school while also keeping the community safe. So I am optimistic. I'm hoping for some good news in the next day or so. I think people are getting tired of my emails up in Albany, but I will keep sending them.
And can I just interrupt for a moment on that? Because I just want to say thank you to you, Dr. Byrne, and other members of the administration who have helped to keep this moving forward. To think that we would be able to implement this is just such a huge, it's a game changer to keeping kids and teachers in the school buildings and not having to be removed from that situation. As we know, that was, that put a lot of strain on students, families, and teachers over the last year and a half.
That's our hope. The county is on board. George Latimer, who's been very helpful. Senator Mayer is on board. The State Department of Education and Commissioner Rosa is on board. So our last step is the governor's office and they've been hearing from me daily. And I did talk with some folks today that if we don't get an answer soon, we may do a little letter writing as a community. It would be a wonderful shared writing experience. So we are rapidly approaching the November 1 deadline for applications for community members to serve on three district committees: audit, finance, and technology. All the information on applications are posted on the homepage of the district website in the district news section. Or please reach out to our public information officer, Sarah Derman. As always, we deeply appreciate the time, energy, and commitment of our community and being willing to serve on the committees and every facet of the schools. Since our last Board of Education meeting on September 28, we have had two cases of COVID, both at Milton School, and neither resulting in quarantines. In our dealings with the Department of Health, we're finding that wearing well-fitted masks properly and being fully vaccinated is making a huge difference in preventing quarantines of asymptomatic individuals. So that concludes my report for this evening. But I did want to ask Mr. DiGiovanni to please, you got a great introduction here. So last week during one of my visits to the middle school, Mr. DiGiovanni handed me these little cool things, told me a little story, and I thought we needed to have some students and staff come and talk about this tonight. So please take it away.
Dr. Byrne, my name is Joe DiGiovanni. I'm the principal of the middle school. The middle school has been working with students to make sure that they wear their masks properly. So the adults in the building have been obviously telling the students we've been calling home to make sure parents are on board to help our students stay safe. After the first almost two months of school, we tried to figure out a better way for students to properly wear a mask. So we asked our student body to help us. At the present time, the middle school is working on public service announcements through some elective courses. So students are creating videos and we'll be sharing them with the student body. We also have students have, they've created messages to serve the announcements every morning to help the students stay safe and to wear their masks properly. They're also creating posters. We are very fortunate because Ms. DiAmente took this to the next level and we have a PBL that's going on in our engineering course. So I'm going to let Ms. DiAmente and two wonderful students talk about the project and something that's becoming a fad in the middle school. So if you see these clips, it's because of these students. So at this time, I want to introduce Emma Singer and Francesca Ribero and Ms. DiAmente.
Hi, guys. You guys ready? Hello, everyone. My name's Francesca DiAmente. I'm one of the engineering teachers here at the middle school. Tonight, I am joined by a couple of my students, Emma and Francesca, who have helped prep, plan, prototype an upcoming project in engineering. In our engineering classrooms, we're all about solving real-world problems. An issue that teachers, administration, and students have all noticed is masks not being worn properly in school. When we look at this issue a little bit closer, oftentimes it's not intentional. The adult medical masks are a little too big. The child medical masks are a little too small for some of our middle schoolers. I asked students to tie the elastic on the back of their masks and they always complain that it hurts the back of their ears, which kind of inspired me to create a 3D-printed mask adjuster and see how my students like it. So Francesca and Emma are going to read something they prepared.
Girls, come to the microphone.
Our teacher, Ms. DiAmente, created this idea for mask adjusters as a solution to one of the biggest mask problems: kids' noses showing. These mask adjusters are not only functional and be related to numerous shapes and sizes, but encourage kids to keep their masks up for long periods of time. Due to these mask adjusters, kids are encouraged to keep their masks on. Not only that, but teachers can save their voices and not have to tell kids to put their masks back on. These mask adjusters are not only practical, but fashionable, too. Thank you. Thanks, guys. So this idea kind of snowballed and became pretty popular among my students and students from other classes as well, which kind of inspired me to turn this into a design challenge in my classroom. So four of my students, Emma and Francesca, also Elle and Melanie, who couldn't be here tonight, have been a tremendous help in determining the criteria and constraints or the wants and needs for this upcoming lesson. We've worked during X period as well as lunch to design, model, and test various prototypes of these adjusters. Countless other students have been wearing prototypes and giving us feedback so that we can make improvements along the way. So Emma and Francesca are going to demonstrate how to put the mask adjusters onto a mask. We also created a tool to help put the mask adjusters on a little bit easier for students who either struggle with fine motor skills or their masks are just fraying on the ends. So the real fun comes in when I bring this lesson into my classroom. Students will use a 3D modeling software called Tinkercad to create their own adjusters, customizing them however they like. This lesson is project-based learning. It's solving real-world problems. It's following the engineering design process as well as making our school a safer place. So thank you so much for your time. Special thanks to Emma and Francesca for their support and coming out in this storm. You should all have a little box in front of you, but if you'd like to either swap out some adjusters or grab some for a student or child, there's going to be a box in the back.
That's awesome.
These are fantastic.
Thanks so much. So just as a closing comment, I'd like to thank the board and previous boards for supporting the engineering program. So we've talked a lot about pathways for our kids here in Rye. And a few years ago, we had a fairly small engineering program at the middle school. We now have engineering sixth, seventh, eighth grade and we have great plans for where we're going next. So thank you for creating the foundation, supporting us to create the foundation of this program because this is what it's all about. They'll be building these things today and next-generation wind turbines in eighth grade in the high school.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm speaking for everyone to say I cannot thank you all enough for coming and showcasing all the work that you're doing. This is just phenomenal to see that flip of, let's problem solve together and get the creative ideas of the students and make it a real active learning experience. So thank you both very, very much for coming. We really appreciate it. And for our wonderful engineering teacher as well.
The whole engineering department. Now, they have a big challenge that we post them, which is figure out what to do with the piles of death shields that we have downstairs in the basement. But, all right, there we go. We'll have to hear about that soon. And I'm sure, Erin, there were music to your ears when you heard about students with special needs having some modifications for these adjusters.
That's great.
So cool.
Thank you. Okay, so since we are going to put a pause on talking about our book, although I know everyone's really upset because they spent a lot of time reading and going through and making notes, but we will get to it, I promise. This was a wonderful, and if people have not had a chance who are watching before we have the discussion, it'd be wonderful to read it. It's just a fantastic look at how to approach differences in students and how they learn, looking at strengths. And, well, I won't say anything more because we are going to talk about it the next time.
Can we combine open topics on the book talk and make everyone read the book?
We could try. I don't know if it'll work, but anyway. So now I guess we'll open it up to the hearing of the public. Hang on, I need to get my little speech. Where's my speech? Okay. "We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes." And I will ask our district clerk to set a timer for three minutes so when you hear it go off, we can wrap up.
We have a new timer.
Ooh, we have a new, ooh, very fancy. Okay. Not like the turkey's ready, but. "The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org." So if anyone would like to make a comment?
Thank you. In full disclosure, I've done everything I could to get it under three minutes, but it's three minutes and 25 seconds. Just letting you know. Hi, my name is Lisa Dominici. I live at 93 Adams Avenue in Portchester. I lived in Rye for 21 years and I'm here as the executive director of the Rye Youth Council. The Rye Youth Council is a 50-year-old 50C13 youth development organization that supports the social, emotional, and mental health of children, teens, and young adults in our community. Our programs engage, educate, and empower young people. We serve on the Rye Act Steering Committee, work collaboratively with families and other local youth organizations, and importantly, we partner with the Rye City School District. I'm here tonight to thank you all, and in particular, Dr. Byrne, for the district's increased attention and commitment to supporting the social, emotional, and mental health and wellness of students across all grade levels. It's extremely encouraging to have a district that now places a strong emphasis on the whole child, that continues to build a foundation for strong mental health support structures, and which understands that without mental health or emotional health, a young person has diminished capacity to learn. The benefits of social and emotional learning, known as SEL, are well-researched. A 2021 systemic review on the effectiveness of school-based interventions found that universal SEL interventions enhance a young person's social and emotional skills, reduce symptoms of depression and anxiety in the short term. When students have opportunities to develop and practice social, emotional, and cognitive skills across many different contexts, academic learning accelerates. Hundreds of studies offer consistent evidence that SEL bolsters academic performance. Last year, during the peak of the pandemic, the district prioritized social and emotional well-being. Rye Youth Council served alongside faculty and administrators on that SEL task force. Through the district, Rye Youth Council delivers professional development training on topics such as self-care, curricular support for teaching SEL to the district's third and fourth grade, and DBT skills to the district's third, sixth graders. And last month, Dr. Byrne offered in-service professional development for faculty to become certified in youth mental health first aid, an evidence-based course that I teach with Nancy Pasquale that's like CPR for mental health. It's designed to teach adults how to help an adolescent who's experiencing a mental health or substance challenge or is in crisis. Research shows that teens from upper-middle-class families have higher rates of depression, anxiety, and substance abuse than any other socioeconomic group of young people in America. And while all age groups are struggling with their mental health during this pandemic, young people are struggling the most. 2020 data from Mental Health America reported that throughout the pandemic, youth ages 11 through 17 have been more likely than any other age group to score for moderate to severe symptoms of anxiety and depression. Rates of suicidal ideation are highest among youth. In fact, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people ages 10 to 24. These data deserve our attention. This school year, the district is partnering with Rye Youth Council and Rye Act to implement an evidence-based peer-to-peer program to educate Rye High School students about depression, anxiety, and other depressive illnesses. This program is proven to support students in reducing stigma, raising awareness, and most importantly, encouraging help-seeking when needed. We applaud Dr. Byrne, school administration, and faculty for working with community partners like Rye Youth Council to build a foundation to support the social, emotional, and cognitive health of young people. And we're committed to our partnership that provides students opportunities for growth and learning for lifelong health. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Good to see you.
Okay. I don't see anyone else approaching, so I think we can move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Vivek Kamath. And so before we do a full approval, we'll go through each of the sections as we have been each week for any comments or questions. So consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal construction.
I did have one quick question on that one, so sorry. So I was looking at the change order for Neighbors, which was a $35,000 change order and it referenced 54 overtime hours, but the tickets attached only came to 28. So I'm just wondering, it said there was other previous tickets noted on there, so I just wanted to understand if those come in the future, making sure that we've paid it, you know, how the system works on your end to track.
Yeah, so we do track it. We actually have a whole backup system to track it. So if it wasn't attached, it could be because it's just attached to the wrong ticket. But it is accounted for and we make sure that everything matches up before it comes forward. There is just a lot of paper, so I'll go back and take a look and make sure that all the tickets are attached to the appropriate change order.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I know, well, we just did the tour tonight and there's so much amazing work to be done. So, no, it's very complicated, but that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Consent agenda fiscal.
I'm honored to have done that. So I would, the Southport School, it's something that we have talked about kind of briefly, the Orton-Gillingham training, but I think it'd be beneficial to just kind of highlight what that contract is. Giving it, you know, it's a sizable contract for teacher training for some of our special education teachers.
Sure. So the contract with the Southport Schools is really connected to our work with Haskins. And it's to train our special education teachers in the Orton-Gillingham methodology. I presented previously that we've trained a group of our AIS teachers. They're certified at the classroom level and then this year they're continuing on and they'll be certified at the associate level. And then we have a group of classroom teachers also going through training. So this is our next phase of making sure that our special education teachers are also trained with this method.
Thank you. It's great to see. And then the second one on the fiscal, just getting background on the Delia Coppola contract because I know she's a consultant. We typically use in-house, but just reviewing that for us as to why we actually have a consultant coming in for the K-2 literacy.
Sure. We had a resignation right at the end of the summer for our K-2 literacy staff developer, unfortunately. We did post the position. Did not get a large pool, I think, just because of the timing of the year. So this is our solution is to bring on this consultant to work with our K-2 teachers just for this year and we'll be posting the position in the spring.
Thank you so much. So helpful.
Thank you for, it helps us connect when you do a presentation. And now here's the actual work happening as we go through the year. Okay. Consent agenda professional appointments.
So sorry. Something else to say on the professional appointment. So the only thing I wanted to say, and Chris will back me up on this, is I was so excited to see the curriculum team in place for this library crosswalk course that I did my first curriculum council with Chris in the past couple of weeks. And it's just this amazing course that is combining digital citizenship with critical thinking and collaboration across, you know, our librarians and our teachers. It was such an exciting program and to see the team in place, I just got really excited for that. And there's a lot of other great things happening at professional appointments, but I just wanted to say thank you for working so quickly to get them.
Here, here.
Yes, here, here, for sure. And then we have classified appointments and special education. Okay, so then we'll take a final vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. And I don't think there's anything else, any other mentions from the consent agenda to highlight. Nope, I think that was it. Okay. So moving on to information and discussion, we have three policies that are on the agenda for tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to our policy chair, Jane Anderson.
Okay, so before you, we have 2330, which is the executive sessions policy. This is updated using the framework from the New York State Board. The last time this was updated was 1996, so it was time for it to take a little perusal. There is, there are no content changes. The reasons for executive sessions, procedures for, during, and after remain the same. It was really more formatting and just kind of specifications about that. So take a look and if there are any questions, please let us know. Yes?
So notice this says a board may only take action in executive session in accordance with law. Is there like a couple laws that cite the reasons or is it scattered all throughout the code and not practical the list?
If you look at the references in the bottom, education law 1708, public office, those are the reference back to when those things can be done.
So should we reference that in the policy? That those are the references?
That is the reference to the, you mean to the law?
I mean, I'm not, unless my reading comprehension's diminished, which is very possible, I don't see how someone could definitively know that what you just said from reading this document because it doesn't say in accordance with laws which are listed below. That's what I'm essaying. Should we indicate something to indicate that those are the laws that? Like if someone was curious to find out what could be done in executive session, as I read this right now, it just sort of says in accordance with law, go figure it out on your own. You're telling me the answer's already there, so why don't we just tell them the answers?
Certainly, we can look into that and then we'll bring it back forward to the committee, to the full board.
I also think, though, the reference section is something that's pretty standard.
It's in all of our policies.
In all of the policies. So in lieu of referencing throughout each policy, like say another policy that is also connected to it, it's part of the reference section at the bottom. So otherwise, you'd be referencing everywhere.
You might be a little too deep. Are you just saying, it might be easy to say in accordance with the laws referenced below?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm suggesting.
That's how it's going to be.
We'll certainly take a look at. I'll bring it back for the board at the November 9 meeting. Any other comments? Okay, 5280, inner scholastic athletics. This is a policy that we had a general overview philosophical discussion with last meeting with our director of health and student, losing the entire name, health, physical education, and athletics.
Athletics.
Thank you. Good luck. So if you take a look at it, what it has done is separates a little bit more the criteria,
So if you take a look at it, what it has done is separates a little bit more the criteria, opens it up more. In previous times, RYE was one of two districts that was more restrictive. This now puts us in line with fellow districts with which we have athletic competitions with. We are now more in line with our other participating districts. This came about, the request to review the policy came to the board from Susan Reed Dulay as a result of inquiries related to her entry interviews that came from both coaches and parents. The change will allow eighth graders a spot, an opportunity to compete on the varsity level without restriction to sport levels available and student athlete cuts.
After completing the athletic placement process?
Right, I'm gonna, yeah, yeah. So to be able to actually have that happen, it's a long process that is taken, that is undertaken, that includes work by both the district's nurse, the athletic department coaches, the high school principal. It is a comprehensive committee that provides an opportunity for a student to be eligible, to be considered for the process, for a spot. This policy, if we adopt it, will take effect for the winter season. It will continue for the spring session as well, for the spring season. In May, the policy committee will review the policy and data related to this policy. We will take a look at the number of students who reviewed and/or who applied or/and/or were accepted. We will also take a look to see the number of sports that were involved, and we want to take a look at the number of student athletes that were impacted by the change to the APP. At that time, we'll have a committee meeting again to review the policy and the pertinent data to see if the policy has been created in such a way that is creating the opportunities that we are hoping, or is it creating harm for students in either regard? We want to take a look at it. And then if there are changes that need to come as a result of the data review, we will bring those forward in June.
Do we anticipate that it will affect a lot of people, or is this more like?
This policy, well, this policy and change according to Susan Reed Dulay is something that is for the absolute exception to the norm. So this is a one in every so often. It is not on the regular. It is not something that we anticipate that will happen, because this exceptionality is for the most exceptional athlete.
Right.
And the standard by which they must meet is very high.
So the only, that makes perfect sense in my understanding of how we discussed two weeks ago. The only point on that is how much, this may not, the data we review in May, this may be a sort of a multi-year thing to have.
And that is the point, is that this is the kind of policy that we want to and should be reviewing yearly to ensure that what we are doing is in the best interest of all students.
Makes perfect sense.
I think this also, I just want to point out, I think this also puts us more in line with what NISPA, whatever the, I'm not going to get the whole, the high school.
Yep.
Because that is also, it's not just that we're in line with what other schools are doing, but it's also something that they have as part of their, not recommendations, but as part of what they have outlined as a standard around.
Yes, it is the standard operating process and procedure for APP across the state in multiple districts.
Right.
Well, I think, you know, going back at the years that we talked about this situation, the policy, what our view has always been is protect the students in general, right? We don't go overboard. We don't take away opportunities from juniors and seniors to participate, because we have a chance to get more victories if we have an eighth grader that can do something. So that's always been the balance of this. And what I, and that was part of the conversation here, what we came out of it, is that what we're looking at is that what we don't think is because it's such an exceptionality-based thing, in such few cases, mostly in sports where you wouldn't have that dynamic, that we're willing to make the change, because we just don't see much downside to it. So I thought the conversation around this made a lot of sense. It still fits within what our overarching goals are, and this gets us aligned with some other districts, and allows the flexibility to do right by that exceptionally grader every now and then.
Right. And it also provides us with the opportunity to do something, to be thoughtful about it, and to be reflective, which is what we expect our students and teachers to do. So let's try it, let's take a look at it, and let's see if it's worked for us and if it hasn't.
Totally agree.
And then we'll move forward. So this is, this will be on our tickler for May, and we'll be coming back to discuss it in June, and we will discuss it if we come back and there's no data, no participation. We will be transparent about that as well, and we just want to make sure people know what's happening.
Right. Well, and I appreciate the committee's thoughtfulness of collecting the data and putting it on the list for future review to see what the actual utilization is.
All right, then moving on to the next policy, which we also discussed at our previous meeting, 5280.1, this is the athletics and PE opt-out. An application was created by Susan Reed Dulay in consultation with Suzanne Short, the interim high school principal, and also based on conversations and talking with students to really kind of understand exactly where they are and what they're doing. So an application and criteria have been put in place and will be used for the winter and spring season. The deadline for this opt-out period will be December 3. The students who came to the last meeting, who spoke along, have, along with students who previously came to obtain an application from Susan, they have been contacted, the document has been shared with them, the document has been shared with the PE staff, who will be sharing the document with students in their class, and it will be on their Google Part of the criteria is that the program is sustained, vigorous, and organized. It is in physical activity that equates to about 120 hours per season. It must be a competitive sport with established team organization taught by certified or non-certified personnel with appropriate experience and certifications. They must provide a resume. The program must be approved by the Director of Health, PE, and the high school principal. The students will be expected to complete an activity log as well as a reflection at the end of their season. Parents are required to sign off on the application. Again, this is a policy that is, we're going to go ahead, you know, barring approvals, the policy will be put into effect. The regulation needs a bit of time to just get into a proper formatting, so that will be brought for the next board meeting. But in the interim, the application and the criteria are being used, so that is not a hindrance. This, as was mentioned at the last meeting, time is of the essence. We have given that time, and so that process is already moving forward. Additionally, this policy is going to come up for review and discussion at a policy committee in May. We again will be looking and discussing data. We want to look at our student participation and requirements submitted. We will look at students who were denied, why were they denied, and what was the impact of that decision. We also want to have a more holistic conversation related to coursework. And we want to, we've asked to take a look at what is the student coursework that is being missed while students are opting out, and that is both for our in and out of district opt-outs. Are there key missing components of the curriculum that we want our students to have that they're not able to access because they are opting out of PE and health at that time? That's going to be a more long-term, robust conversation, but in terms of the numbers of participations, denials, requests, and then successful completion through this application process, we want to take a look at it, again, ensuring that anything we're putting in place isn't causing unnecessary harm or stress, and making sure that we're really meeting the needs of all of the kids as we are charged to do.
Terrific.
I think the one other thing that we talked about, or at least we asked during the committee meeting was, or the policy meeting, was whether or not that application was consistent with what other districts have used and would be deemed to be sort of standard for these other third-party service providers. And so we got confirmation that that is the case. So it's not overly onerous, and people would expect to see that, whether they're in RYE or another district, or if you were not part of a mainstream sport, that these qualifications are consistent and, you know, should be followed. They should be well-received on that.
Yeah, there were a couple, just a couple of things. First of all, thanks for all the work on this. It's a huge undertaking, and I love the direction it's going in. Two things, the, there's a note, there were some questions around a competitive sport, because it seems like there may be some areas where you could find an activity, I think Tommy brought up dance, that where you could hit every other qualification, but it might not be a competitive program, where there was some gray area, and it sounded like we were still in there.
Well, Susan actually had a conversation with our dancers.
Okay.
And this language that was created meets and fits that box of the dance programs.
Okay, even the ones that aren't, don't compete?
My understanding is that, my understanding is that the idea of competition, so that could be somebody who is, or who is dancing regularly enough for a performance.
Got it.
But also there are, for those who are at the junior and senior level of dance.
Right. Perfect.
They are competitive dance teams.
So we have, the term competitive is broader than maybe assumed.
The one might insist, the one might.
Perfect, that's great.
And if necessary, I think they could always just challenge Chris Repetto to a dance.
They could, they could definitely, that would be worth, we can make money on that. And then the last one, I see it here, and it's just, it's interesting, I don't have a problem with it, it's student conduct. And it says, "The student shall comply with applicable rules for students not assigned for a course during the same period." Why is that in there? Is there any time when a student doesn't have to comply, whether they're an opt-out athlete or not?
It's just, it's just a reminder.
Just a reminder.
It's a free period.
Yeah.
And they're reminded that they have to follow the rules of the school during that free period.
But kids, but kids who have free periods for any reason have to follow the rules.
Right. And so when that's noted, when they sign up for eating for lunch and things like that, we put those reminders in a lot of it.
Yeah.
And I would assume that's also a reminder given to any student that's opting out, that's in, part of a varsity team that is a school team.
If it, and on the application, it says, "If I am found loitering in the halls or disrupt in school in any way, I will immediately lose the privilege of opting out from PE. Furthermore, I understand that if at any time I am no longer a participant in the ODE activity, I must return to physical education classes immediately, and failure to do so will lead to disciplinary consequences and a failing grade in PE for the semester."
That all sounds good.
Jane, I had a question about timing. Did you say something about December 3? And when did, I thought when you were reading off the policy, is there a specific timeframe for the season, that if you don't apply by a certain time, then you can't get it for the season?
Correct.
And if you're in a year-long sport, do you have to apply each season?
Yes.
And is there a firm deadline? And where will that deadline be on the website, or where can parents find it?
So on the application, it clearly states the application deadline. The application must be submitted no later than Friday, December 3, to the student's PE teacher of record. That's on the documentation that the parents have to sign, as well as the kids. It'll be in the Google Classroom for the kids.
We said that's right, Google Classroom, okay.
And that will be also something that the kids are told in their PE classes. But yes, Susan has said that for year-round sports, students will be expected to submit at each of these crucial deadlines.
Okay.
Can they submit early and just do it all at once at the beginning?
No, they're gonna just, it's a reaffirmation process.
So it's a window that opens up?
Yes.
It's kind of like when you apply for the sport and you have to go to family ID, right?
Exactly, you gotta do it every time.
You gotta do it again, that's fine.
I just, all right, I had to do it again, yep.
Yep.
Okay. And again, no exceptions. If you don't make that deadline, then that's it for the season.
Yep. Yep. And the students are, you know, as I said, she's worked, she worked with the students from the fall semester.
That's great, very nice.
This springs, for the winter semester, everybody's been made aware, PE teachers are the ones who are sharing the information, as well as it's being posted and it's in announcements. So everybody should be informed.
And that update honestly shifts once you get to the spring.
Correct. Yep, for the winter season, it's December 3.
Great, thank you.
Random question. I mean, if somebody opts out, but then wants to attend the PE class, and what I'm really getting to is if, you know, we've talked, or Liz just talked about last session, revamping some of these, maybe adding things like yoga and stuff like that, like, if someone wants to participate in part of it, is that an option, or it's going to be an all or nothing, there's no scenario?
It's all or nothing. You really, if you opt out, you're opting out.
Because it's a class on their schedule. So a teacher, they have, that's on their schedule.
So I think that's part of, not that question specifically, but the idea of looking at this from a broader curriculum point of view for the future is the reason to do that, because especially if you are someone who is potentially going to be applying for every single season, that might be something that you would want to, and there's no requirement to opt out. I mean, people, you know, I think that it's also something to remember, that sometimes gym can be, or physical education can be, just a downtime for a student in that. So I think there are students that are probably part of our varsity teams that don't opt out, and some that do. So, you know, again, I think that there's some data collection to look at how this rolls out across the district and look at all those things, and that's definitely part of what we want to look at.
Yeah, what you just mentioned is sort of what I was getting at, meaning if there, and again, I'm not saying there should be, and I can obviously present the logistical aspects of it, but, you know, if there are options for pods or certain things for the student who would, you know, sort of opt out for the whole year, but there's something that might be relevant, something to consider as how we structure things, you know, certain parts that maybe they'd want to be in for one season because it's focused on X or Y.
Well, and I think, I think that's where the forethought will have to come in as we get more, further into these discussions for students to consider.
And if you remember the last meeting, that was something that Ms. Dulay spoke about, was this idea that they are looking at creating smaller opportunities within the broader curriculum to have yoga, Pilates, these kinds of things that students, so that will have to, that ultimately will impact how they think about and how, again, the policy is implemented. But at this current time, it's the structure for which they've operated under the past few years, and we'll take a look at that in the spring and in May.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and the other portion of our information discussion is to revisit the Board of Education goals that we looked at over the summer. Many of these, I think as we talk about them each year, are long-term goals. Many of them are reflective of the RYE commitment and what we have outlined as the priorities for our district and what we're trying to do. So each of these segments has, I'm not going to read them all off, but they have, they're broken down by instruction and professional development, operations, and fiscal management. Some of the topics are high-level, so they don't necessarily list out all of the different programs and initiatives that are going on, but those are incorporated into them. As I know, Kelsey and I had a conversation earlier today about the work that is ongoing that we requested from the administration, about the task force recommendations and that data gathering, that piece is, while not specifically noted here, is part of those initiatives that we're continuing to work on throughout the year. And, you know, obviously our capital project and, you know, many of the other program elements that are being undertaken. I do think there was one in particular that we were trying to have a discussion about, and that is the goal of, under instruction and professional development, to support the district's creation and ongoing implementation of academic programs, recognizing multiple pathways for students in an effort to understand the wide range of opportunities beyond high school. I think we were, we were trying to make sure that that was understandable, because it is a bit of a mouthful, but I think it's, it's, so I throw it out to the board to kind of give your input, but ultimately what we're trying to do is encompass all of the work that is being put into providing students the broad information and opportunity of the pathways beyond our educational scope, which is K through 12.
Right, right.
And in particular, as you get to high school, like, those next steps beyond there.
Sure. So, I mean, tonight was a great example. We had students come and talk about work they're doing in engineering classes. We've been working, strategically working on building the foundation to develop an engineering pathway from the middle school through the high school. And the foundation actually starts in the elementary school. So as we went toward all of the elementary schools, and we saw the work going on in the libraries, we also saw the spaces that will be the maker spaces. So those will be the first steps in the engineering pathway. The middle school will be second steps of the engineering pathway. And Tricia and Caitlin and the high school administration and the engineering department are working now on further building out the high school engineering opportunities and what that sequence is going to look like. So that's one, that's a really great current topical example of a pathway that we've created. You know, in the work we've done with integrated co-teaching at the elementary level, bringing it to RYE when it was not here before, making significant modifications across the core content areas, and having co-teaching across all content areas in the middle school, and the significant shifts this year at the high school in integrated co-teaching, that's a pathway that now exists through the entire system from K to 12 that's available for kids. The, looking at the academy, it's a project-based pathway. So the academy is a program that we developed, we're in year two, and looking at how So the academy is a program that we developed, we're in year two, and looking at how is that pathway helping prepare our kids for different opportunities when they leave beyond the high school. So it's that work that we're doing in looking at creating all of these different options for our students to pursue when they're in the schools with us.
Any comments or questions?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay.
All sounds good.
Okay. Are there any other areas that, you know, because we're kind of looking at this again from when we looked at it over the summer, and as I said, there's a lot of these that are long-term goals, like, so when we talk about like the first box under instruction and professional development, to provide our faculty, staff, and administration, the support to deliver instructional programs that are student-centered, responsive, inclusive, adaptive, engaging, while developing all of these different skill levels that have been shown through data to help students be successful in their lives currently and in the future. You know, I guess we get a little bit into more of the focused areas where we get into integrated co-teaching, as Dr. Byrne was just talking about, language-based learning, literacy and communication, those pieces for professional learning are also included in here. And then the ongoing recovery plan, COVID recovery plan, and then, of course, our, our always-present fiscal management, which we cannot say enough about how, I can't say enough about how thankful I am at the great fiscal management that has, has been in place since I've been on the board and even before, and, you know, really kudos to our administrators, Gabby and her team, on that, as we go through audits and all of those pieces. And then our overall operations. So if there's any other comments or, or questions around it, otherwise we can bring this forward, I think, at the next meeting to adopt for the year.
What's the plan?
Yep?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. And I think that gets us to communications to and from the board. I think we heard a lot about policy already.
Absolutely. And there's a meeting next month.
All right, there you go.
I, as Jen knows, I served as a delegate for the NISBA annual meeting...
Yes.
Last Monday, a virtual event, four hours long. It was riveting. And it, we, there are about a little less than 300 members, delegates that were there, and we voted on a new slate of officers for NISBA, New York State School Board Association is what that stands for, if anybody doesn't know. And, and then there were about 25 resolutions that were brought before the delegates that we voted on, and, and I think everybody got a copy of those, if you're interested. So just wanted to update you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Any other committee meetings yet? I don't think we have, no? Right, no? Okay. Okay, so then that brings us to, there's one policy on, or regulation on here for information for people to read. And then that brings us to the end of the meeting. So our next board meeting will be Tuesday, November 9th. It'll be our open topics, and just a very brief, kind of bit of information about that. We are looking to figure out how we can have open topics in person and keep people spaced apart, so that we are making sure that everyone is safe. So there will be more information coming out through the district as well as the PTOs, and I think what we're trying to do is put a, put a sign up together, so that we have a sense of how many people are coming, and then we can appropriately space people.
We actually have the form ready to go, so we'll be sending that out to the community, because we're required to have six-foot distancing between all the folks that attend the meeting. So pre-registration will enable us to identify classrooms and spaces that we'll use for the breakout groups, because we definitely will not all fit here in this room.
Right. So look for information on that coming, and hopefully we will have a, maybe a slightly earlier start, and we'll still be able to talk about the power of different, our book talk that we were slated to do tonight. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Chris Repetto, seconded by Callie Erickson, all is in favor. Seven, nothing. Thank you so much for joining us, and I hope everybody gets home safe.